And we will open with the End Homelessness Briefing. Catherine Kitchen, you want to set that up?
I just want to thank our guests from the National Alliance to End Homelessness. Some of you may be familiar that they've been helping the city of Austin out with our revamping of the Arch. And of course, they work all over the country and are experts on what other cities are experiencing. So, we're really lucky to have them here today. And I want to thank them personally for -- they were in town to work with the Arch, and I want to thank them for taking the time this morning to come and talk with us.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you to all the members for inviting us to be here today and giving us some time to speak with you. I see we have some city managers, some assistant city managers, some other community members. So, we're really appreciative of having the time to be able to engage with you and hopefully answer some of your questions. And I think we will be able to really have a good dialogue around some of the things that you're experiencing here in Austin. My name is Cynthia Nendra, and I am the Director for the Center for Capacity Building at the National Alliance to End Homelessness. This is my colleague.
Good morning. My name's Kristi Scholberg. I'm a Senior Technical Assistant Specialist for the Alliance.
And so Kristi and I have been coming to Austin for about the past year or so. We started coming to Austin about a year ago to take a look at, specifically at the Arch, but sort of just generally how the shelters were functioning in the homeless system here, to sort of provide some recommendations about how to strengthen their role in the system, try to help them get some better outcomes, and also try to help the city and the system kind of help support shelters a little bit better to be more successful. And so today, we're going to cover a number of those topics. So, a little bit about the Alliance. The National Alliance to End Homelessness is a national voice on homelessness. We have been operating for about 25 years, basically since homelessness really just started. And we are headquartered in Washington DC. We work in three different core areas: policy and advocacy, and that's mostly at the federal level. So, we work a lot with the administration and with Congress to make sure that we are funding programs at the highest levels we can, and also advocating for funding programs and policies that are evidence-based, things that we know are working, making sure that the funding is sort of going into the right things. We also have a homeless research institute, and we do our own research and research translation. We work with a number of researchers in the field, which are what we call our research councils, all those sort of major researchers who work on homelessness and housing. We also have the Center for Capacity Building, and that is where Kristi and I work. We are the arm of the Alliance that works directly in communities across the country. So, we work in several cities, small and large, around the country, really to learn from what's working well in homelessness, to end homelessness, to reduce homelessness. We really like to work in communities where we see decreases, to see what they're doing. We also disseminate what we learned to other communities to help them sort of implement better responses to homelessness. Our whole goal is to help communities reduce the number of people who are homeless in their communities. That is our main goal. And then we take what we learn to our national partners, to make sure that they are also kind of infusing what is happening on the ground in their national policies. So, with that, I will talk to you a little bit about what we're going to talk about today. I know there's a lot in the PowerPoint. That's largely for you to have the information. Some of those things I will sort of whiz through, but you will have it to sort of read on your own time, and I'll kind of hit the highlights there, because I know there's a lot we wanted to cover. So, I'll talk a little bit, very quickly, about the national trends in homelessness and kind of where things are headed. What are some of the common myths about homelessness that we often have to talk through with all sorts of communities? What does an effective home response system really look like? What does it have, or its characteristics? And really, most importantly, what role do housing-focused emergency shelters play in that effective homeless response system ideally? And we'll talk a little bit about what is an effective shelter model. So, just really quickly, I want to talk about the national trends. On the left, you have the trends from the different sub-populations from 2007, and on the right, our most recent annual point-in-time count. I think many of you probably know that the federal government, Department of Housing and Urban Development, requires each community receiving federal funding from HUD to do a point-in-time count in January, either every one to two years. And so if you look, sort of if you compare the two charts, you'll see that homelessness has decreased over time across every sub-population over this time. There are differences in the counting methodology and things like that, but if you look at the trend data and not the year-to-year data, you can see generally that the overall number of homeless individuals and families has decreased, and there's been a decrease in just about every sub-population. And so, the reason I bring this up is to talk about really what we know works, that these decreases are happening despite, as we know, extremely high housing costs, stagnant wages, things like that. So, despite really difficult, challenging economic forces that are outside of the homeless system, there have been decreases. Why is that? Since 2007, as I said before, there's been an overall decrease of about 15%, and the most dramatic decreases have been among veterans. Overall, across the country, there's been a 38% decrease in veterans. Here in Austin, you have functionally ended veteran homelessness. People and families, there's been a 23% decrease. Individuals experiencing chronic homelessness, that's long-term homelessness with a disability, a 19% decrease. And people living in unsheltered locations has actually decreased, meaning people living outside, not even in a shelter, but in their cars, under bridges, on the streets. And so, since 2017, since this last point-in-time count is 27 to 2018, homelessness declined in 31 states. And there have been increases, very slight increases. So, between 2017 and 2018, there was a slight national increase of about 0.3%, about 1,800 people. That's largely in California. That's really where the increase comes from. But I know that you here are experiencing increases, as are pockets of the country. I'll talk a little bit about why that might be. And increases are being seen largely in the number of individual adults in your homeless population, so not families, not veterans, some that might include chronically homeless people, but it's largely the number of individuals. And as the largest subgroup, I want to point out, nationally, homeless individuals make up 67% of the total national population. That's pretty reflective of your individual community as well. Individuals, meaning individuals who don't have children and are experiencing homelessness or not in a family. They might -- they don't have children, and they're on their own. They experience sort of the -- they usually make up the largest, most significant part of a homeless population, and yet often, we give them the least amount of resources. We target resources to families, to vets, to chronic, to youth, and that's where often there's resources coming. But we are now seeing the impact of that. We're seeing that these are folks that are kind of being left behind. And so, we think that one of the major reasons is there hasn't been a targeted investment in this population, and we want to emphasize solutions that are, for individuals, are really critical. So, since 20 -- why the decreases? Since 2006, the federal government and local funding has primarily moved towards funding permanent housing strategies, housing-first, permanent housing solutions, and using outcome-driven strategies. So, it's been a very intentional strategy from the federal government. A lot of your funding here is reflective of that. You really align a lot of your priorities to the federal priorities, because they work and because that's also where the funding is coming from. So, the field has really moved from managing homelessness, sort of putting a Band-Aid on it, a temporary Band-Aid, to solving it, to providing permanent housing solutions for people to a larger scale. We're nowhere near where we need to be at that scale, but that's really what the decreases are related to. And so, communities are investing in housing-focused solutions are the ones that are really seeing the significant decreases. So, why are there increases? Well, rising housing costs, stagnating wages, there's higher rates of inflow into homelessness, so more people are becoming homeless. This is a harder number to capture, but if you look at increases in your community, you can't sort of look at it as a static population. You have to think about how many more people are falling into homelessness every year to really get a sense for why there might be increases. So, your community, I have a chart that says, you've actually housed more people this year than you did last year through your homeless system, but the people falling into homelessness, there must be some sort of increase there. And it's not something that communities often measure, but they're starting to do so. So, also, there's not enough flow into homeless systems to housing. I'll talk a little bit what system flow means and kind of elucidate that point a little bit more. And not enough targeted investment in permanent housing resources. So, there's investments in temporary resources oftentimes, but sort of not enough in permanent housing, and the kinds of sort of flexible permanent housing that isn't permanent supportive housing, meaning long-term subsidies, but really the short and medium-term subsidies that we really see helping communities bring more flow into their system. So, I just want to talk quickly about some myths around homelessness. We don't know how to solve homelessness. This is something that you'll hear working in a lot in the press this week, because I'm not sure if you've seen the numbers from California. They are pretty depressing. There's a lot of increases in the Bay Area and San Francisco, and so there's been a lot of press around, well, we must know how to solve homelessness. We're seeing increases. It must be that we don't know what we're doing. And that is a myth. The solution to homelessness is housing. That is something we are -- we, when I say we, I mean the field, the field of evidence, research, practitioners, funders. We have seen homelessness really be the key to solving homelessness for each individual person that is experiencing it. I wanted to just point out one example of this that's pretty clear. In 2010, the federal government decided to spend five years of intensive investment, and that investment has been ongoing, to end veteran homelessness, really make a huge dent in veteran homelessness. And they poured HUD and the VA and the Obama Administration poured in a lot of investment into federally funded vouchers for veterans, as well as rapid rehousing, so short, medium-term rental assistance with services for veterans and their families. So, if you had a veteran even in your family, your family could get the sort of rental assistance, case management services. And as you can see, the investment over the years from 2010 to 2017 has increased largely, these are the permanent housing investments, and the number of people experiencing homelessness has fallen by 47% that are veterans. And it's not a coincidence. These are, the resources given to communities are really brought to scale. It was really to scale. There's enough money for each veteran, and what it also requires is leadership and coordination on the ground, a very strong kind of backbone organization to really help figure out how to use that money well, or several organizations. But the resources are really, the targeted resource in permanent housing really made a difference. They also really helped, you know, temporary housing for veterans become sort of better equipped to work with highly vulnerable veterans. So, temporary housing, shelters, what we call GPD, transitional housing, those are the things that were kind of revamped to really work well in this system. They weren't working well before in the system, and then they were kind of worked well, they were revamped, retooled, to become better sort of partners in this whole process of housing veterans. So, we know the solutions are housing-focused, and the solution is, I mean ultimately, the solution is adequate incomes or an adequate supply of affordable housing, so that people don't become homeless in the first place, but we know that we are far short of both of those things. So, until then, we have to help the vast majority of people move quickly back into housing with short-term and longer-term rent subsidies and connection to services in the community. And I'll talk a little bit more about shelters' role in that. So, we know that another myth is homelessness is caused by people's characteristics. So, what makes people experiencing homelessness? Is there mental illness? Is there substance abuses, disabilities? This is a myth largely. These things contribute to someone's experience of homelessness, but by and large, homelessness is a housing-driven economic problem. If there was a sufficient supply of affordable housing, there would not be widespread homelessness. I'm sure you've heard this before, that before the 80s, there really wasn't widespread homelessness. Had a lot to do with the social safety net being cut, but also, the federal government stopped funding vouchers, and we found that less and less to scale. The amount of people that needed affordable housing, that need was not being met. And so, today, we are 7.2 million affordable units short across the country for extremely low-income renters, and these are really the folks that we're talking about falling into homelessness. I just wanted to show you, this is from the National Low-Income Housing Coalition that has some really great data on each state. This is Texas. It's a little bit, I don't know if you guys can see it in your PowerPoints, but there's -- so Texas has, I'm going to look at this, because I can't actually do that. Has 843,000 number of low-income renters that really, like extremely low-income renters that need affordable housing. There's only 29 affordable housing units for every 100 that need it, and so 74% of those are extremely low-income renters. In other words, you're short, you're pretty short on the number of affordable housing units you need. It doesn't mean that your folks can't be housed. You're housing people every day on the very low-income scale, but there's a shortage, and this is kind of also driving the increase. As you can see, Texas is pretty red, as red as California and Washington, some of the other, and Florida. So, these are the places that have really an extreme shortage. And you can also see that this is the 10 states with the highest homeless counts, meaning highest rates of homelessness per capita, and this is 2018, and Texas is in the top 10. Again, just wanted to make that relation, shortage of housing, rising housing costs, and numbers of homeless. So, the lack of affordable housing kind of has a dual effect. It pushes more people into the homeless system, that's that increased inflow into homelessness, and it makes it more difficult for people to exit homelessness to housing, because it's harder to find the housing. So, because there's not enough affordable housing, many of these poor households are much more unstable and likely to fall into homelessness. So, it's just something to kind of keep in mind. So, homelessness happens because incomes don't match housing costs. That's basically the main reason. If you think about just the people in your community, there's many people who have mental health issues, or substance use issues, or disabilities, but only about 1% of them ever fall into homelessness. And that's because they have economic protective factors, family, you know, healthcare access, that's a huge thing that people who are in extreme poverty don't have. And those are the things that protect them from falling into homelessness, but if you're on the very, very low end of the income scale and you don't have those protective factors, this toxic combination of slow wage growth and skyrocketing rents can really put housing out of reach. Zillow, the real estate company, has done a ton of research with some of the big researchers in homelessness, Dennis Colhane at the University of Pennsylvania, and they've looked at their housing data, their rental, the rent data they have over many years. They found, for example, they're finding an increase, a sort of clear connection between rent increases and homelessness, and they found that in LA, for example, a 5% increase in rent translates into about 2,000 more people who are homeless. This is a chart here that shows, which we haven't really seen data like this, and we're kind of, we knew this to be true, but this is very specific, that homelessness really climbs faster when rent affordability reaches specifically 22%, meaning people are paying over 22% of their income to rent, and at a greater rate when they're spending over 32% of their income to rent. We know that many people who are in your income, in the low-income scale, very low and very cost burden, are spending over 50% of their income to rent, especially in this community as well. So, it's kind of important to just kind of keep making those connections. And so, we know that the majority of people become homeless for economic reasons. Many people living on the street and in shelters do have income. We know this from just looking at the Arch and from some of your other shelters here. There's many people there who have income, and I've lived there for, we're saying, three, four years, sometimes five years. We don't know how much longer, it's just that's how far the data goes back. And the people, and that's because they're saving money to get out, or it's really hard to kind of get that leg up. You need a security deposit, help with a job, you know, with an application, but they're working. And we know people who are living outside of, on the streets, or some, a lot of those folks are working as well. So, what they need is some help, just kind of getting a leg up into housing and some stability staying there, but they do, a lot of people do have income. So, I wanted to point, this is what I had mentioned before, that there, this, over 2017, this is from your point-in-time count data that was just recently released, this is how many people you have housed, your homeless system has housed, despite all of these housing costs and all of the sort of the challenges I just mentioned. I wanted to point out that over 70, that you housed over 1,700 people, your homeless system, over 1,700 people last year, and that was 233 more than the year before. So, thousands of people are getting housed each year. It's really important to kind of, when people say, well, there is no housing, we can't possibly, housing is a market-based solution, how can we house people? You're housing people, and you're helping them stay there, and they're not returning to homelessness. So, it can be done, we just need to sort of scale up the resources that are working well. People living outside or in their cars refuse help because they want to be homeless. I assume a lot of people have heard that. It's something we get a lot of questions about. There's also a pretty, by and large, a myth, I can't speak for every person, but people generally remain homeless, and this is, we know through a lot of survey data and just really, you know, getting to know what people want who are living outside. People remain homeless because there aren't available housing and service options that actually meet their needs. In other words, what's on offer to them isn't appealing or helpful, because it's not like people are running around giving people housing options. You know, they're really saying, do you want a shelter bed, or do you want some, a place to stay for a night? For a lot of people, leaving their car, leaving all their stuff, leaving their partner or their pet behind for one or two nights in a place that they may not want to stay in, or they don't really see how that's going to get them out of their situation where they are feels better. So, it's really about not giving them the options that are actually going to help them. Often, we find when you give them, when you give people things that they do want, that are going to help them, that are going to give them really a permanent solution, they're going to take that. We saw that with veterans in your community, for example. So, we often ask people to go to shelters that are inadequate for their needs and are not offering a permanent solution. You know, we ask people to fit our existing programs, and we don't really make our programs fit people's needs. And we really need to do better at sort of making our programs accommodate people's needs. And I want to point out, emergency shelters are not housing. It's not permanent housing. So, offering someone a temporary place where they may have to leave every morning at 5:00 AM and come back at 5:00 PM, and maybe not be able to stay for even a few nights, it's temporary, it's not housing. I mean, people do stay there for a long time, but they have to really abide by a lot of rules. And so, and it's not housing, it's a temporary place to stay, and it's not meant to be housing, it's not built to be housing. So, I ask just rhetorically, if you were an individual, or adult, or a couple, or someone with a pet, where would you go in Austin? There's almost nowhere to go if you're a couple. There's very few places that take pets, and so, you know, you have to ask yourself, even if you would go, would you be allowed in, and would you want to stay there? And so, that really, I think, helps us kind of be a little bit more client-centered, think about what the experience is for people who are living outside and what's on offer to them. So, what is an effective homeless response system? What does that really look like? So, the goal of an effective homeless response system, really simply, a community's response to homelessness should be ideally to house people as quickly as possible, as quickly as they become homeless, and divert people from imminent homelessness whenever possible. So, prevent their homelessness, if you can, by helping them stay where they are. They might be doubled or tripled up, precariously housed, or help them find a safer alternative housing solution rather than coming into shelter or into the homeless system, where it's a lot harder and more expensive to help people. It's easier to sort of help them if they're already in a stable, it might be unstable, but we can help stabilize them with a little bit of financial resources and services. And we recommend a systemic approach, because that's what we see across the country, working to really reduce the numbers of homeless, people experiencing homelessness. That means aligning your interventions and resources across all of your programs in a really coordinated way around one common goal, housing people. And that doesn't mean everyone has to be a houser, but it does mean that everyone knows what their part is in getting people to that point of housing. And so, if you have a lot of siloed programs that are kind of doing their own thing, they might be great programs, they might be doing, have great outcomes, but if you're not all kind of really understanding what your part is in the entire system, kind of what spoke you are in the wheel, it's kind of, you definitely see a lot of fragmentation in the response and the outcomes. So, the end game really that we're looking for, we, the field, and communities, is that if you have a really effective system, people in a housing crisis have access to immediate help. Hopefully, that's shelter, that might be services, but some kind of housing crisis resolution, including a safe place to go, and diversion services. So, hopefully, you have a place to stay if you need it right away, and you're being helped to sort of be diverted from homelessness if there's any other options for you. People are not unsheltered, this is something, just generally, people, you would want to work towards people not being unsheltered, and people do not spend long periods of time homeless. So, in other words, if they do become homeless, you have a system that bounces them back into housing and helps give them services to stay there. And people exiting homelessness, of course, we don't want them to cycle back in, so we want to make sure that they're stabilized as far as we can do with the homeless system, connect them to the mainstream other systems, so it shouldn't just all be on the homeless system, we can't do it all. So, connecting to the mainstream other systems that are going to help them stay housed. The federal government and your community as well is sort of very outcomes-focused, and they're looking, how do you really know that you're ending homelessness? You're reducing inflow into homelessness, you're increasing exits to permanent housing every year, you're decreasing the time people spend homeless, and you're decreasing returns. One concept I want to talk about just really briefly is system flow, and I think it will help, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I think it will help kind of position shelter within this system, and kind of help illuminate what shelters should be doing kind of in this, in this effective homeless response system, because I've talked a lot about housing, but I want to talk a little bit about where things get stuck a little bit. So, a system flow is essentially a concept of an efficient and coordinated process that's moving people from homelessness into housing as quickly as possible. You want that flow through your system. But oftentimes, people are getting stuck in a lot of different places, because the system isn't ideal what I'm talking about. You have many of the pieces here in place. You can see it also somewhat more clearly with some of your sub-populations. You've built a system like this for veterans, you're building one for youth, and so you're definitely building, you have a lot of the pieces in place, they just aren't to scale for all of your populations. So, you have system flow in some places and not in others. So, what is poor system flow? It means you have kind of either an unchanging or increasing number of unsheltered people, waitlists for shelter, long lengths of stay in shelter, which you definitely have here, high percentage of exits from shelters to homelessness, lots of people going back, average like the stay is not decreasing, inflow is increasing, and you have long waitlists. So, I have this little, very rudimentary animation, just to kind of show you what a system kind of looks like, and this is, I think, pretty reflective of a little bit of what's happening here. So, you have a lot of people who are unsheltered, you have limited amount of shelter beds, and you have even more limited housing resources. And so, you know, people are kind of generally moving, some people are moving from unsheltered to sheltered, as you can see, some people from sheltered are moving to housing, some people are moving straight from an unsheltered location to housing, but by and large, you're sort of still kind of seeing your numbers increase because there's not enough of the housing resources in the backend, and you can see the sad faces in shelter, in the sheltered locations are other long-stayers, so people who are staying there for long periods of time. So, some people say, why don't we add more shelter beds? Let's just add some shelter beds, and that's going to help with our unsheltered, alleviate our unsheltered problem. So, add some shelter beds, let's put some of those shelter beds in there. And what you see is, yes, some, you'll have more people staying in shelter, less people who are unsheltered maybe, but people are still going to be coming, your inflow is still increasing, there's still going to be people kind of piling up outside, and a lot of people are getting stuck in your shelter, because there's still not enough housing resources, there's no way to get them out, right? So, the people can now get in, now you have a lot more long-stayers in your shelter, because they don't have ways to get out. So, how do you balance shelter and housing? Well, this is adding rapid rehousing capacity, let's say. Rapid rehousing is one of the best ways to add flow into your system, so we'll add some housing capacity, and as you can see, I don't know what happened there, generally, people are, you know, able to flow through both shelter and housing, and some people straight from unsheltered to housing much more quickly, because you just have more ways to exit. So, people have to be able to get in, and people have to be able to get out. So, an effective homeless response system means right sizing your system, that's what we call right sizing, making sure the pieces are the right size, having rapid rehousing to scale, this is really, really important. You have permanent supportive housing. Rapid rehousing is extremely important in getting that flow through. It's short- to medium-term rental assistance, most people in your population, that's what they need, and you want to balance those temporary help with permanent housing solutions. So, you need both the temporary help, the shelter, the emergency services, and enough permanent housing solutions. And you want to treat each person's episode of homelessness as a community, as an urgent crisis, a crisis that needs a quick, permanent housing resolution, and sort of not something that we need to wait for to resolve. This is some, just some stuff, you know this, you've had a 15% reduction in vets, a 25% reduction in youth over the past year, and I just want to point out that you are experiencing success in these areas, and you want to build on that. One thing I did pull here is something about your family resources, think about right sizing. This is kind of, I'll walk you through this. So, this is essentially how much temporary shelter and transitional housing, you have temporary beds you have for families, how many people, what percentage of people are unsheltered. So, you have about 101% temporary housing capacity. What does that mean? You have more, you have just about enough beds for every single family that's homeless. You don't lack beds, according to your housing inventory chart and to your point-in-time count data. And so, and you have a very low percentage of people who are outside, which is great, but you only have 36% of rapid rehousing capacity for that family population. So, what I think is likely happening is a lot of people are in shelter, and a lot of people are, but they're not able to get out, because they don't have enough housing resources to get out. So, it's good that you have shelter, but you wouldn't want to say add a lot more, tons more shelter for families, you probably want to add a lot more housing resources for families. This is just a rudimentary look, so I don't want to say that this is a definitive recommendation, but just with a quick, like kind of 30,000-foot glance, this is kind of what it looks like. I don't have your individuals' data. I think it's probably a much lower percentage of temporary housing capacity for individuals, and I know it's a very low number of, a percentage of rapid rehousing for individuals. And so, that's something to really think about, and that's the way you sort, you know, you can look at your data in a way, it's like, how much do we have for whom, and what do we need? This is just your point-in-time count and the trends. You are having an increasing number of unsheltered people and an increasing number of individuals, You are having an increasing number of unsheltered people and an increasing number of individuals. And that seems like really where you want to target a lot of your, I know you are targeting your efforts towards that, and it seems like that's really the right way to put it. So in all of that, what is the role of effective emergency system in this whole, emergency shelter in this whole system? We know emergency shelters are critical to ending homelessness. They have to be part of this process. As a system across the country, as a field, we have left emergency shelters out of the conversation for too long. We, they were one of the first responses that cropped up around homelessness. It made sense to give people a bed, a cot, a mat, a meal, some basic needs, because we didn't really understand 20 years ago, really, what the best way was to end homelessness. And now we do, and we've kind of left them out of the conversation largely in many communities. It's partially why the Alliance is spending a lot of time in communities really focused on shelter and rapid rehousing, because we see those two as being really critical elements of moving, getting flow into your system, because people are getting stuck in these different places. And so they're important because people in a housing crisis are going to need a safe and decent place to go that's immediate. We want to help people immediately have that kind of urgent need met, and that one that accommodates their needs, doesn't sort of say you have to be this kind of person and this kind of family and this kind, you know, we want to make sure that that's available for people. And sometimes, since we don't have resources to scale housing-wise, shelters may be the only place people resolve their, get any services, any help at all. So we want to equip, we don't want to put all of our dollars and all of our services into shelter, but we want to equip them to at least be able to help people in a reasonable way get housed, right? So we don't want to make, we sort of have to balance helping shelters get stronger at housing people and really helping them and adding housing resources to get people out. So what is the goal of emergency shelter? So traditionally, this is, I think, going to sound familiar to you, this is in your community, I think, when we asked people kind of what their, what type of shelter they have, a lot of people raised their hands and they said it looked like this. To provide, the goal being to provide temporary shelter and safety. So you have kind of a hostile-like environment, like a check-in, check-out kind of place, meets your basic needs, showers, laundry, mail. There's a lot of self-directed resource information referral, there's a little bit of case management, but it's pretty light touch, and there's not, it's not a ton of support services, there's a lot of people, not enough staff usually. Or you could be a shelter that is really providing a path to housing, that the goal is entirely focused on providing a path to housing and ending homelessness for every single person that walks through the door. And that means you're resolving housing crises permanently, facilitating self-resolution for people who can get out easily, a lot of people can get out easily on their own with just a little bit of help, rehousing people quickly, help, making sure you're pulling in people who are unsheltered, and making sure that your programs are accommodating to those folks, and connecting people to housing search and other resources that can help stabilize them once they get housed. So essentially, you're trying to change the entire culture of the shelter, the entire purpose of the shelter, be from a temporary place that's kind of holding folks and keeping them safe and giving them a place to stay and giving them shelter, to a place that's trying to get them out, trying to really get them to housing. So many, many, the traditional shelter model, many people refuse to stay in shelters because they're not accommodating of their needs, as I said before. If you can't come in with your partner and you're asked, well, you can stay here, but your partner, or, you know, your husband or wife, your partner has to stay in a shelter across town, you can't be together. And when you're, you know, that's not something that a lot of people feel safe doing and, or good doing. You can't bring your pet, your only, you know, your only family, you can't bring that and you have to get rid of it. That's not an option for a lot of people. Limited hours of operation is really difficult, having to bring your stuff in and out, too many rules, some people feel unsafe, or it's unclean, or it's too crowded. You can imagine if you have a mental health issue or something like that, that can be very difficult. So the smaller your shelters are, it makes them a lot easier to manage. So shelters really should focus on getting people housed, not just offering a bed. That's really a lot of the work we're doing with your community now, especially at the Arch. This is kind of the transition we're helping them make. And they had a lot of the pieces in place, it's really about kind of making the shift, the culture shift and the operational shift and the philosophical shift to really becoming kind of laser-focused on housing and helping equip them. They definitely need other, the system to support them as well, but there's some things we can do internally within the agency and the organization. So these high barriers get in the way of people getting the help that they need. And one thing we often try to say is shelter should not be a destination, and right now it is a destination for people. They're staying there for long periods of time. It should be part of a process of getting people housed. The shelter is equipped ideally and resourced to help people get housed as soon as they come into shelter, and everything in that shelter is focused on getting them housed. And as I said before, people have to be able to get into shelter, you want to lower those barriers and make it accommodating to people's needs, and people have to be able to get out to housing. So that's really the design concept of really any shelter, that we would recommend being kind of part of this more effective housing system. So the outcomes you're looking for are to decrease, and this is what we're trying to, we're working towards also, and we're collecting a lot of baseline data on this as we make these changes at the Arch, decrease long stays, so those people who've been there for a really long time, let's focus on those folks and help them get housed, increases exits to permanent housing, decrease returns to shelter, and increase shelter utilization, meaning we want more people coming through, right? So if you have more people, a lot, those beds aren't turning over. So you might not need tons and tons of shelter for individuals, because if you have people in your current shelter staying for four or five years, those beds are not turning over. But if we turned those beds over and people actually went to a more permanent solution and didn't come back, you'll have more people coming through those shelters. One thing we really strongly recommend, don't just build shelters without a housing exit strategy. So as you saw in the animation, if you add shelter beds, it might, for, we've seen this in many communities, for six months, you'll see a little, maybe a downtick in your own shelter population, maybe, the next year it's going to go right back up because that shelter is going to be full, not, people aren't going to be able to get in, and you're going to have the same problem you had before, need to build more shelters. And so shelters are really critical to the system, and you just want to make sure that they're, you're adding as many housing resources really as shelter beds. So if you want a shelter to turn, a bed to turn over, say, every 60 days, and that bed to turn over in, over a year, you want to add, you know, six housing resources a year every two months for that one bed. So that might be, you're thinking about, it doesn't have to be permanent housing, supportive housing, it can be six months of rental assistance is what often a lot of people need, a little bit of housing search services, housing navigation services. So only you have to build those units out there. You can find the housing in your market rate units, you just need people to help connect people to those resources. So effective emergency shelters are smaller, they're less than 100 beds often, they can be larger, but if you're building new shelters, I know you all are thinking about doing, I would really recommend them being smaller, they're easier to manage, they're easier to get people in and out. They should be scattered around your community, not sort of all gathered in one place. That's so that they can, they want to be, you want them to be close to resources so people have ways of getting to where they need to be. But as you know, that if you put everything in one place, it doesn't help that neighborhood very much. Focus all services on housing people as quickly as possible, this is really a lot of the work we're going to be doing here this week at the Arch. Low barrier in accommodating people's needs, as I've said many times, safety is very important, obviously, even though you're lowering barriers, you're prioritizing safety for all the people who are in there, including staff. You want to keep them open 24/7, and that's just because people leaving in the morning and coming back at night is, it's really challenging to stay in a place like that and go to work, for example, or even manage the shelter, all the different shifts you have. It takes an operational shift, and it takes a staffing shift, and it might take a resource increase, but usually not that much, and it will be so much more client-centered. It'll be much more appealing to people who are living outside. You might have heard of navigation centers that are happening kind of on the West Coast. There's a basically low-barrier, housing-focused shelters that are less than 75 people, that are prioritizing, they're prioritizing their highest need folks in encampments into those shelters, and they're letting them come in all as they are. No, they're not looking at what gender you are, how many pets you have, they're just bringing you in, and they're finding that people are much more willing to go, and people have been living on the street for a long time in San Francisco and the area, but they are lacking in housing resources, so people are staying there a bit longer than they had hoped, and so that's something that they're really having to pay attention to. Another example is San Diego built, you might have heard, these three large tents to get a lot of people off the street because they had an urgent HEPA outbreak, and they had to deal with it. But now there, now there's lots of people in tents, and they're, again, having a lot of difficulty getting them out to housing, and so their numbers haven't changed, and they're sort of, they should, they just needed to sort of, they did it as an emergency response, but they didn't add that. And now they're adding the housing resources and the case management, like staffing and things like that to sort of help the problem. Tiny homes, tough sheds, you might have heard of other temporary housing solutions, they're all fine as long as they have a permanent housing exit strategy and that they're connected to services and that they're decent to stay in. So if, to create better system flow, you know, if you, basically the solution is housing-focused services and shelter, and increase permanent housing resources provided by the system, the funders, to the shelter and to the system to get people out. I mean, that's the basic, the basic message I want to give you. So I'm going to stop there. Sorry, went a little bit long. But these are just some of our resources at the end, if you're looking for more research on our website on shelter and things like that. So I want to stop there and let you all ask questions, make comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel? Anybody have any questions? This is very complete study, it's very helpful. Thank you. Yes?
I'm sorry if I miss this. So there was a slide about, they're not numbered, so, but it was like the end game and kind of a summary of, you know, what everybody aspires to, I guess, but is there, is there an example of any city who has been able to reach that end game?
For their entire system, there's some systems that have done pretty well, but it's been mostly population-focused, so I think that, so for, even Houston, which I know has, their numbers have increased a little bit more lately, but they have seen, they saw significant decreases in the past five years, and they, and it was largely because of sort of re, sort of retooling their whole system to be more geared towards this. So they've seen a heavy decrease in chronic homelessness, I think 80 or 90%, is that still right? Yeah, 80 or 90% decrease in chronic homelessness across, it's a big city. They've, they also ended veteran homelessness, they've seen now they're really focusing on youth, the thing that they, and families, they've seen major decreases in family homelessness. I think that what they're now trying to do is target more research towards individuals, but there, Houston is the closest neighbor, I think, that I would look at in terms of what they have done there. And there's, there's several pockets all over the country, Minneapolis, Utah, then it's interesting that they were doing really well in Salt Lake City, and they, they kind of went back to some old traditional models that have like clearly made their system a little less effective. But there are pockets of the country that are, the 31 states that have done decreases, so for example, the state of Georgia, I think they have reduced homelessness across the state by 60% in the past five years. Virginia, about 60, I think 50 or 60% across the whole state, families, individuals, vets, youth, basically by implementing these things like across the state. Connecticut, a 90% decrease in chronic homelessness. So, and these are the, this is where we get this information essentially, we look at what they're doing, and this is where we get those sort of ideas, but okay, this is what they're doing, and this is what we want to replicate.
What did Houston do that led to that decrease?
It was, I think they did a really, it was most, it was ground up, and they changed the resources at the top, right? So the locals, local and federal funding, they really aligned that to what they actually needed. They looked, they looked at a lot of their data and decided, okay, well, you know, we really need more money funnel towards, certain amount funnel towards chronic homelessness, let's really focus on that. We have all these veterans' resources, just like you did here, figured out kind of how to target those resources. And they sort of had a much, they sort of removed a lot of the silos between the funding, so ESG, COC, local funding, city funding, and removed, and a lot of the shelters, they sort of got them on board with what they really needed, the system needed them to do. So instead of having this day center, let's make this a coordinated entry assessment housing crisis resolution center, because a day center, it's helpful to give people showers and things, but we're not resolving their homelessness, so let's use that resource in a completely different way. Let's target chronically homeless people to this kind of shelter. Let's make sure we attach a lot more, they brought a lot more rapid rehousing into their system, that was one major thing they did.
So it wasn't necessarily an increase in funding, it was just realigning everything?
I think they probably brought in a good amount of funding as well. I think because they've been very effective, they've also been able to attract more funding, private and public dollars. It was retooling their system and bringing in more housing resources, so there was an increase in housing resource funding, I would say, and they really did retool a bunch of their shelters.
Okay, thanks.
Greg?
Thank you so much for the presentation, really, really helpful, thanks for coming. So I think we have this, you know, urgent sense like so many other folks do, to do stuff and to put things on the ground and start dedicating funding, especially lots of the capital dollars that we now have made available. But, you know, I pay a lot of attention to the, your lines you put in red and in bold, like not building shelters without a housing exit strategy, and I think that's been something that's been hard for us because we hear it a lot, but we, and so when do we know that we have a housing exit strategy or a sufficient housing exit strategy for this number of shelter beds we want to build? Like, we're, we have some housing exit strategy because we do have some amount of PSH, we do have some amount of rapid rehousing, but how do we, what is the general rule of thumb around how much rapid rehousing and PSH is sufficient for X amount of shelter?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that there's not a, there's, it's not like there's a formula, but you actually, your action plan that your, your system leaders have put together have kind of estimated what you need in terms of, just based on who they're seeing come into the system and who's in their system, they've kind of figured out, we need about this much rapid rehousing because there is an assessment tool that your community uses that basically assesses people for the intensity of resources they need. And I said, oh, I think we need, I think you've gotten it down to sort of even a dollar amount, we need about this many more rapid rehousing resources and this many more permanent supportive housing resources based on what we're seeing in our homeless population. So I don't think you need to wait, wait until all of those come online, but if you're going to be putting, if you're going to be putting shelters on, we call these sometimes like right now, right now solutions, like we have to put shelter up because there is an urgency, we see people on the street, we, there's all kinds of reasons we want to put them into a shelter location at least while we wait for housing. I would say that you should design, you can design your shelters, if you are going to put shelters up, you can at least design them in a way that's much more housing-focused, staff to really help people, you know, better case management ratios, you know, operationally are kind of equipped to help people get housed, just with what they have. So if we, if we take a sector of people, there's going to be a sector of people in every shelter that is going to be able to get housed based on what they have. They're not going to get a housing subsidy because there isn't enough, but they're able to pull together their disability benefits or their, you know, what their, what their income is, and they're able to do shared housing, they move in with somebody else or they move in with a couple people, and they're not, they're not getting a housing subsidy, but they're able to get housed because they have the kind of service, they have the services around them to help them find that housing, get into that housing. And then you have a, probably, I would say probably, I'm guessing about 60 to 70% of your population would, probably is in need of a short-term, short to medium-term rental subsidy. And when I say short to, I mean, anyway, between three months to two years, rental subsidy, services, housing navigation, and case management to help people stay where they are. And so that, you know, if you're going to build a new shelter, say it has 100 beds, you'd want to think about, well, how are we going to rapidly rehouse at least 60%, 60 to 70% of those people? Do we, can we bring in both the house, the beds, and can we add 70% of short to medium-term rental subsidies to our system so that we're able to house people? So that, these are just kind of rough numbers, would you add?
And I don't want to take more, too much of your time, but I do want to ask for your help a little bit more than that when we can get there, because I think we're in a bit of a somewhat unique situation compared to maybe some other states and cities in that the legal constraints we have on the way we generate revenue makes it way easier for us to invest capital, so it's even easier for us to build shelter than maybe in some other places, but way harder for us to do year-over-year spending for social workers and rent subsidies and the like. And so while I hear that in our plan, there's a way for us, we say, well, this is what the end game looks like, but since it's so much easier for us to do shelter than for us to do the other things, maybe even easy, that mismatch may be even starker here, given Texas law, than other places, that I worry that if we're like, well, we're just got to get to this end game, that we could be making, we could wind out. I'm not saying that we're making this mistake, but you've warned us in this that other people, you're coming here to tell us-
We're seeing higher numbers eventually.
-other people have quickly overbuilt shelter and quickly underbuilt PSH, and it doesn't get us to where we want to go. I think that we need help knowing how, when it is, we have to cool it on shelter because we haven't caught up on the other stuff, and I don't know, and I don't know where that is. And because we have this urgency to do stuff, I don't want us to take a foot off the gas because I want us to keep on doing it, but I don't want to make mistakes that you have seen other folks make, and so I think we need, it maybe this isn't a formula, but we need help knowing at which point it is that we aren't keeping those two numbers in check together enough.
I mean, I think this is, I was just having a conversation with some folks in Minneapolis yesterday about this. I mean, it is, it is the difficult balance to make. I mean, I don't know enough about Texas law to know why it is you can't realign your dollars to do exactly the opposite of what you're doing. So, I mean, I think some of that probably needs to be explored, so there are ways that other communities like Houston have done that. I mean, the change we're talking about is really difficult, and it requires funders coming together, realigning, not working against each other, being all committed to the same performance goals. So, I mean, the work is hard, so how to balance that, like, how can you leverage the benefit of that law and at the same time not end up having people living in your shelters for three to four years like they are now? So that's, I mean, I can certainly provide, I think, guidance on that moving forward since, I mean, we've been working with the city now over a year. So it's good to know that you have those restrictions. I think we probably need to learn a little bit more about what, how that can be a benefit and how it will hurt you in the future.
And where else you can find some dollars to, there are dollars that I think are being untapped for flexible financial resources, there's like federal dollars that are just not, you know, you can use so many different funding streams, home dollars, you know, there's CDBG dollars, there's always to kind of look at your funding again and see like what is flexible and what isn't, and find, and work with your philanthropy community also to figure out how to fill gaps and things like that. But I, yeah, this, it is, it is, it does require some realignment of how you really fund things now, and I know that that is difficult.
So my sense is, is that we have at this point, kind of adopted as a council, kind of the strategic plan at a high level that identifies goals, but the real tactical plan that starts with an assessment of, here are the 50 different funding sources that we have that are coming online. We know that you're going to be coming back to us to access the $30 million in the Waller Creek TIF, but that might be more capital kinds of dollars. If we go forward with the convention center expansion, there's some dollars there that would be operational, that don't have any kind of constraints on those, that would be a dedicated income stream of that four to eight million, as was projected before. We also have the Downtown Alliance now that's stepping up and saying that they're ready to bring dollars to the table if there was a plan that told us what to do. So I think that we're really at the place where we need that kind of holistic assessment here, all the different resources. You know, the capital expenses that Greg mentions can be spent either on shelters, that's a capital expense, or permanent, or housing that's associated with the bond or rapid rehousing, so there's capital expenses associated with that that has the overlay of the services on top of it. And it seems as if there's almost a potential capital expenditure that would be possible at each one of these stages. But the hard part and the big question is, if you have $1 to spend, how do you spend that, how do you spend that $1? One of the things that the council on prioritizing homelessness is, people experiencing homelessness is the number one priority of this group and the city, was to bring in a strategic officer. Can you tell us where we are with respect to that?
Sure, Mayor, Council. So about a number of months ago, we did a solicitation and we were not happy with the candidates, and so we have now rebid it, increased the level of the appointment to an executive position, ensuring that it has a sufficient amount of salary associated with it, and so that position is actively being recruited for. We have hired an outside firm to do that recruitment. I know that they're looking to have resumes by the end of the month, and hopefully we'll have someone on board this summer. But we've in the interim appointed Veronica Pruseno to really help spearhead this effort from the city manager's office, and so we're an active recruitment for that position right now.
And, and then Natasha.
Natasha, you can go first, I'll go after you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. On the map that shows the states color-coded, I guess I'm just trying to go through and figure out what the similarities are for the reddest states.
Housing costs.
What do we have in common?
You have the highest housing costs and the lowest number of affordable units available.
It's pretty stark across the board.
And then the other question I had was, how do we remove the silos? It's something that I think would be an effective means of, you know, sort of avoiding duplicative efforts and maximizing the use of our resources across the board, not just with this, with everything. I think unfortunately, we're wasting a finite amount of resources by way of duplicating efforts and not, you know, eliminating the silos. I'm trying to figure out, is there a, is there a plan, is there a format we should follow to get the organizations to work together, to get more collaborative effort?
Yeah, there's, I think, I believe that you're actually in the process of starting a flexible housing subsidy pool here. There is something called, a model called a flexible housing subsidy pool, it started in Los Angeles, and now it's sort of spreading to different communities. Essentially, it's sort of taking a funder's collaborative model, you're taking all of the funders in the community, or many funders in the community around the issue, private philanthropy, public entities, trying to figure out also how to, you're asking your housing authority to bring its vouchers, for example, your COC to bring its COC dollars, your private philanthropists to be talking about, to be able to sort of be willing to change their contracting processes and their funding priorities. And you start with a funder's collaborative essentially, and kind of come together to agree on, what are our priorities around this issue? And can we at least align our, as Christie was saying, can we align our goals insofar as we all kind of are working towards the same thing? We know we have different boards and different ways of contracting and different things we're trying to fund, but is there a way we can at least look at what we're all doing and at least fill gaps, not be duplicative, especially with philanthropy? And can we, what's been very successful about, in Los Angeles, about the flex pool, they're called there, is that it has leveraged millions of dollars of private funding. So in other words, we're saying, look, we'll put in this many public dollars and this many housing vouchers and all this, if you'll sort of bring private dollars to make them, to make it work, to make it flexible, and so we can fund things that the public dollars don't fund. And what that's done is now they're all, it's all in a giant multimillion dollar housing pool. So if someone comes into the system, let's say you're a person experiencing homelessness, we're not sitting, you're not going program by program trying to figure out where you fit in, there's a huge flex pool of dollars that's saying, okay, you need six months of rent, and you need some housing navigation services and just a little bit of case management, okay, we'll pull those dollars down from the six different places we can, we'll package it together for you, because we've reduced all of the contracting processes, we've aligned priorities, we're able to net, you're really streamlining contracting processes also, you're giving these dollars to essentially one operator, a nonprofit, an agency, a county agency, a public agency, a city agency, to operate it and figure out all the administrative backend stuff. Everybody else has said, okay, I'll reduce my contracting, sort of, we won't have 75 different ways to contract this money out, we'll have one or two ways, and we'll give dollars out based on the person's needs. So there's someone packaging what the person needs rather than having to be like, well, this person's an ESG person, or this person is a city-funded rapid rehousing person, or this, you know, whatever it might be. And so it requires a lot of backend work between all the funders in the community, but that is really what we've seen be quite effective. It does take a lot of work and facilitating that, but it helps to see where the gaps are, where you need more money, where there is flexible dollars in your system, where you need to bring more in, and it really reduces silos between, between funders.
I guess the second half to that question would be, would this funder's collaborative model, would it assist with a collaborative model for providers as well? Or is this the thing that makes it so that we don't have as much in the way of overlap with providers and organizations?
Well, you can have providers apply for the money essentially, so you can have, like, sort of, you can RFP out the, you know, if you're a shelter provider that's, you only want to work on shelter, well, you can apply for the money that only, they say there's a temporary pool, a part of the funder's, the flex pool has some temporary dollars in it, so sort of temporary shelter dollars for it, it's not all just housing dollars. And so you can contract that out to the shelter. So people can apply for, there's many different ways to do this, people can apply essentially to provide services through that, from the flex pool. This is something that California is moving towards as well, across the state, they're putting a bunch of money into the new governor's budget to contract, so cities and communities will be able to apply for the money out of this flexible pool. It's a little complicated, but there are different ways. And you then will have providers, you can see who's getting what, so you're not funding 10 of the same things.
Can I also just add that as a part of the funder's collaborative, those funders, what I talked about before, they're all focused and agree on those performance metrics that we put up for, for really basic performance metrics, and that there's a community message that providers in the system understand that this is what we're going to be responsible for. So we see a lot more performance outcomes in the contracting versus what we currently see now, which is like performance outputs, like tracking the number of people served, or the number of bed nights, or the number of meals served, like things that are not really going to tell you how well you're ending homelessness. And so really looking at performance metrics and having providers understand that this is their main responsibility in understanding how well they're really doing, because most providers probably are not thinking about the work that they're doing in that sense in those performance ways.
Because many of their funders are asking them to provide reporting on bed nights or meals served, or, you know, so if you got your funders together in a room to agree on those, what are we really trying to do in terms of outcomes? And then they started putting that into their contracting process. And even if you didn't have a flex pool and you could just have the funder's collaborative part, where you're at least deciding what we're all trying to do, and people can opt in or opt out, at least you start with a place, you start from a place of trying to align as many of your funders as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I want to go back to some of our conversation about shelter, and I want to ask you a question about navigation centers. But I first want to make the observation that, I think I noticed from your data, and also we've noticed from our point in time count, that we're actually increasing the number of unsheltered individuals in Austin. And we're seeing that in our downtown area, we're seeing it in our neighborhoods, and it's, it's leading to, I mean, it is certainly an urgent situation, and we are hearing from our communities, and we're seeing ourselves, the urgent need for people to get sheltered. So while I certainly understand the importance of getting the right balance between shelter and rapid housing, I would, I would say that that doesn't mean that you don't build shelter while you're trying to get the right balance. And I would also say that that doesn't mean that you wait for detailed plans before you take action, particularly since we have an, since we have an action plan in Austin that our community has worked on. So you had said something about navigation centers, and I think I heard you say that those, it sounds to me like those were shelters, smaller shelters perhaps, that were, have you seen them, have you seen it done in communities where they have targeted particular areas of town, or where they have targeted particular areas where people were living unsheltered? Have you seen that kind of activity, and can you speak to that?
Yeah, they're definitely, this is something they're really trying in San Francisco and the Bay Area, which is where I'm from. So there's, navigation centers are just sort of rebranded low barrier housing-focused shelters. They're housing-focused shelters that are really targeting people who've been experiencing homelessness for long periods of time, who've traditionally not come into shelters, and often are in encampments. There's some things that are working well, there's some things I would warn against, because it was sort of, it was a pilot project at first to just say, you know, how do we get people who are living in encampments inside? They don't want to come inside, they don't want to come in for shelter. And they interviewed lots and lots of folks living outside, and they told them what they wanted, and then they built these navigation centers. You could come and go, you could come in with the people that you wanted to come in with, you could bring all of your stuff, you didn't have to get rid of anything, that's a big thing for folks, having, you know, being able to bring in their possessions. And they weren't huge, they were, you know, maybe 50, 75, 80 beds. And they only brought in as many people as they thought they could house in three to four months also. And they prioritized housing resources for the first few shelters. They had like a 60 to 70% housing exit versus, you know, what most shelters are, which is 15 to 20% housing exits. And that was because they were, it was both, they got people in and they had enough housing resources. Once the pilot was over, they had to integrate these shelters into the rest of their system, which meant that there was permanent, they had to go through coordinated entry, they had to have permanent supportive housing, they had to be sort of prioritized as everybody else was, they couldn't just put all of the housing resources into these couple of shelters. And so their housing exits went way down, like 15 to 20%. So while they're able to get people in, a lot of people are leaving the shelter and going back outside because they're not getting housed. So they got people in for a short period of time, and the people they're able to get housed is great, they just have to build their housing resources up too. But I will say, people aren't staying, because they're like, well, what's the point of me staying here? I'm not really getting, I'm not getting housed, I'd rather go back outside. And so it's not because the shelter isn't really nice, and because they just don't see a purpose of staying inside for much longer if they're not going to get out. And so that's the, again, it's like, they're definitely, I think you can build 50 to 75 bed shelters pretty easily, design them well, and you don't have to have tons of housing resources online for them to be effective. It just has to be some sort of, it's a both and, it's not either, it's not either shelter or wait for housing. It's how do we figure out how to do a little bit of both in a way that alleviates? And to answer your question, sorry, they did target, they still do target areas, so they put them all over, they're putting them all over San Francisco, there's a lot of nimbyism in San Francisco, so that's not easy, but they use city properties, they use temporary shelter sites, things that are going to make the community a little bit more, make it more palatable for people. But they are small, and they do target, and they, they're looking for a one-to-one, they know it's a visibility issue for the public, so they try to, if they're putting a navigation center in that community, they try to target people specifically in that community that are unsheltered to bring into that shelter, which helps sort of visibly show that there's a difference, and also you're bringing those people inside in that neighborhood that they're used to being in.
So, but I heard you say the pilot worked, why didn't they keep the program that they had for the pilot?
The program is fine, they don't have enough housing, they had, they had attached all these housing resources that the whole community needs to one shelter just to try it out.
Okay.
And that's not fair to the 90% of the rest of the people who are experiencing homelessness and that, so they had to integrate it into the larger system. They just wanted to try it, and we see, the great thing is you see that it works, the program works, the shelter model works, the housing works, we can house the most vulnerable people and they can stay housed, but without those supportive housing and rapid rehousing resources, that's, we see that the model starts to fall apart.
Okay, okay, well, so, so the message that I'm hearing is that shelter is important, because otherwise people are on the streets.
That's right.
But it's the right kind of shelter, right kind meaning the right kind of program, plus it absolutely has to be connected to a pathway out of house.
That's right.
Is that, am I repeating that correctly?
That's exactly right, yes. That's a good summary. I could have just said that.
Pardon?
I should have just said that.
Well, no, no, I mean, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly.
That's correct.
Because, so can you speak, I have a last question, does somebody else have a question?
Go ahead, we have other people to speak to.
Go ahead. And then I'll ask another question.
So I just, I want to first just thank you for the work, not just for the presentation today, but really for the work that you've done with our community so closely over the last, I guess, couple of years now, and it's really helped us reshape and redesign, you know, begin that redesign of our own shelters, and so thank you, I think that's really helpful. I wanted to just highlight a couple of points that I think you said in your summary comment, and make sure I'm hearing you correctly, as I understand the work that our, that our community is doing. Echo, and I see Ann Howard here of Echo, has worked with the providers to really respond to the federal, the federal need to create a system, and I, you know, I've had an opportunity to see that continuum of care close up and in the conversations, and so, you know, I know that, I know that our community is building out that system and how, as you said, really has the right strategies in place, we just need to scale up our reach to those different populations. And so in terms of, in terms of the work our community is doing, I see us as being really on the right path.
Yes.
In terms of having that.
Yeah, we would definitely agree with that. I mean, part of the reason we also wanted to work here is because of some of the success you do have to learn from it, and you do have a really effective backbone sort of infrastructure for the system. Certainly Echo, your city partners, I mean, all of that has been, has made a significant difference in the success you have had.
And as I say, we need, you know, tremendous more resources and more private partners, among others, to kind of help us scale those resources, but, you know, as we look at, as we talk about some of what you described as obstacles of barriers and silos, I think as a community, we've, we're doing our best to kind of move away from those, and I've seen, just in the limited time I've been watching, you know, tremendous progress in that regard. One of the other things that I think is, you know, I'll just mention because it's up before us, we've talked about the Arch redesign here, but we, we also initiated, asked our city manager to look at providing, at identifying some fundings, funding that would help the Downtown Salvation Army Shelter provide those caseworker services that help make that a housing-focused shelter too, with the hope that if we can, if we can help, along with hopefully lots of support, continued private support, if we can get the Salvation Army's Wrath Gapers Center up and at 100% capacity, then the Downtown Shelter would have freed up capacity, and if we can provide some resources for that housing-focused case management, that that really helps that, again, become a more housing-focused shelter. But I thought it would be good to, just to pause, can you help, can you give us some examples of what, what does that support look like? So when, when we're trying to transform our emergency shelters into housing-focused shelters, we've talked about case management and support, but can you, can you describe like the array of, the array of individuals who would be staffing services like that and what they would do?
Sure. So this is largely the, the work that we're doing at the Arch is trying to figure out how to take what they do have and transition it without, because they, without really much increase in their budget, this is just sort of working within what they already have. And we sort of, so we recommend a number of kind of effective keys to shelter. So one is just generally taking kind of a housing-first approach, meaning you're allowing people in who despite, no matter what their kind of tenancy barriers might be, and you're focused on housing them without prerequisites for helping them. And we, sort of, the services part, the housing-focused services part, has a lot to do with an intentional engagement of people from the minute that they walk in the door, so that when people walk in, they know, this place is here to get me housed, I might not want that, and maybe this isn't the place for me because of that, but this is what this is. And the engagement comes from what the place looks like, from the first person you walk in the door with. And we're going to talk a lot with the Arch about sort of creating kind of a radically welcoming environment that's still safe, so it's not like you're necessarily, you feel like you're there because there, people are going to help you, and that intentional engagement is from the front, from the security person to the front desk person, to the volunteers, to the people working in the dining room, whatever it may be, it's, everyone is sort of very intentionally focused on this, you know, how's your housing going today, and have you been working on your housing, and what's, you know, whatever that might, that engagement might be. And then you are, you have a housing plan within seven to 14- And then you are, you have a housing plan within seven to 14, 14 days if you've been there. People self-resolve, as we said, they sort of figure theirself, their, what they need out usually within two weeks and if they don't, they usually stay for longer. And so at that point is when you want to make sure that everyone has a housing plan and that they're working on that housing plan with a case manager or we can call them housing navigator, we change the title for some people sometimes so they're not, they don't feel like it's traditional case management they're used to, now they're working with a housing search, you know, engagement specialist or something like that. And that person is trained, and this is what we'll be doing with the arch this week, we've started, we were here a few weeks ago doing a training for all the shelters in your community and we'll do that more specifically, but you want maybe not more than a one to 20, 25 case management ratio. So, you know, a lot of times we're seeing 50, 60, 70 people on a case manager's ratio. That's obviously going to be really hard to help those people get housed, so that they need to be able to access that housing planning services, we want that, either the case manager or some other staff in the shelter to be housing navigators. In other words, out there sort of looking for housing units, looking for apartments, helping people connect to those apartments, helping them do job application, job applications, housing applications, making sure that they, little things that they need might be like, I need to pay the application fee or I don't know how to search for a landlord or I need help with my credit history or I don't have my ID, all the things to become document ready. So you definitely want people doing a lot of document readiness, so people, once there is a unit and they can, they have a landlord that's going to take them, they can, they can immediately go into it. And so generally you just have, you're kind of thinking about if you have a group of people in your shelter that are kind of lower need, let's say, they don't need that many services, you help them, help light touch services and then you have about maybe 50 or 60% of your clients who have, who need more services. So you want to make sure that you have staffing to give them really regular housing case management, housing focused search, navigation, getting them into housing. And then you want people to help them sta, stabilize them, they don't have to work with them outside of shelter, but connect them to services so that they're not coming back to shelter because they couldn't get their benefits paid or their food stamps or whatever it might be, that's going to help them stay, job search help, things like that. So things outside of the shelter, get those connections. So I would say generally each person needs like a one to 20, one to 25 case management ratio and then a lot of, a few other people who are going to be helping, help everybody sort of connecting to housing landlords and housing service services. Did you add anything?
I would just add that I think it also translates into having, I think the, the case manager to client ratio is important, but I think this, within the staff, having solid staffing capacity, so we're, we're going to provide training and org code's going to be here to provide training, but there's training that has to kind of go beyond even that. So that, that case, or housing specialists, whatever you want to call them, are trained in ongoing motivational interviewing, de-escalation if it's going to be a lower barrier shelter. And there's all kinds of other tools that they need to have in their toolbox in order to do that constant engagement. And if the arch and other, Salvation Army and other shelters that you build are going to, we hope, even go a step further and prioritize people, the most vulnerable people to get them off the streets and into shelter, then serving harder to serve populations of people are going to require even more intensive skills. And so really looking at who are we hiring, what do their job descriptions look like?
What are their salaries?
What are their salaries, what are, what are their, the expectations for them to work with this population to meet those performance metrics that we talked about? So how do you, how does that happen in real time? So it's a, it's a philosophical shift, I think, from the staff and, and the folks who are coming into say the arch, what, they understand what the goal is there and that, that philosophical change is going to take a little bit of time. You know, people are going to kind of resist that, like I've been able to stay here for four or five years, like wait a minute now, I have to, I have to get out? I mean, that's going to take a little bit. So I, I think the other thing I would add too, to better support the arch and shelters is what, what is the community wide messaging that needs to come from city council, Echo and other providers so that the community understands what the role is of the arch or the Salvation Army and what shelter is supposed to be in this community and the reality that most people are not going to get a permanent housing subsidy. So what, being really transparent and, and upfront about what we are providing and that there are services being provided here, it may look different, like just because you stay in shelter for X amount of years does not mean that there's going to be some sort of permanent housing subsidy at the end of it. So being really clear about what that is.
Yeah, and if we're going to, the targeting towards people who are unsheltered, I think is incredibly, is completely the right way to go and, and, and really important. And I, I think that if we want your shelters to be able to really focus on people who are unsheltered right now, that means those people are a lot more vulnerable than who they might be serving and as Christie was saying, we have to equip those shelters and that staff. And if we're asking people who are making minimum wage to deal with the most vulnerable people in your community, it's a lot to ask without a lot of support, salary, training, all the things that Christie just mentioned.
And I think real partnerships with, with other mainstream partners, I mean, one of the trends that we're seeing across the country is the harder to serve popular, people have been living outside and the aging population, like people are coming into shelter now that are medically frail, who should not have ever been discharged from hospitals, all those things. And shelters are not equipped to be receiving those folks. So as you think about the models of the shelter that you want, really, really looking at what the needs are of those folks is going to be really important.
Yeah, thanks and I, and I appreciate your focus too on the staff and, and the need to support them both in training, in salaries, in other kinds of ways that we can help us bolster them because this is going to be, it is a major transformation of how we do things.
Yeah.
And so appreciate your, your guidance on it.
Peel.
Thank you, Mary. You know, we've been having this conversation, I've been involved with the, the housing coalition for years and we've had this conversation for, for years already, you know, this is nothing new to us, but I just, you know, I'm really concerned about the arch, you know, that, that place doesn't seem like it has the capacity to accommodate all those people that just, I mean, they're basically just outside in the element all day long. And what would you see a solution to that? Would creating all these temporary shelters outside that area help the arch where we could locate some of the people that, because Salvation has a policy of closing their doors, everybody has to leave in the morning and they can't come back till afternoon, which I, I see that that's a big problem that we're facing here that I've gone to other shelters like Fort Lauderdale where they have a, an apartment building that, you know, everyone stays inside, they're not outside in the element. So what would you say would be a solution to all the, all the problem that we're facing at the arch right now?
So this is something we've certainly been looking at for the past year and I think we've said, I think we said this in our report, that, you know, what's hap, the arch is not solely responsible obviously for what's happening outside. I mean, I think that there are some things that can change in their service delivery model that can change what might be happening with the sort of flow of people around the arch, but, you know, largely we've, what we've been learning is a lot of people send people to that corner and to that walk from all over the city, from downtown, from other shelters, you know, because it's basically a, a decriminalized, like safe place to, and I, I'm not saying we should criminalize homelessness, I, it's one of the myths I, I skipped over, but that's not a, a solution. But people are, they feel okay being there because they can spend time there, people aren't going to necessarily ask them to move along and so they, you know, there, there's all kinds of reasons that people, there's all kinds of community decisions that have been made that are sending people to that. So it's not, it's the arch, it happens to be the arch, but it's because a lot of different community partners have said, it's okay to send people there and we're okay with them being there. And so the, I think that the strategy has to be all of the shelters kind of thinking about why this population is not getting served, figuring out whether anyone, other shelters can serve them, whether these newer shelters that you're thinking are going to target people who are, it looks like it's largely individuals. I haven't really, I know that there's been some survey data of the people outside, but it looks like it's largely individuals and, and some young people. And so that, the intentional strategy to engage those folks should, some of that can come from the arch, but a lot of it needs to be coming from other community partners. Again, what Christie was saying is what is the message we're sending, like what, as a community, what, what are we saying about that group of people that we, we're, we need to give them someplace to go, shelter is part of that and then housing is part of that obviously, or some sort of service engagement strategy that isn't just, you know, we don't really have anything for you, so this seems like an okay place to be, you can, you know, so, you know, there's, there's a, a level of acceptance that's happened around, around people being out there and I, I think it's much better than criminalizing people and, and arresting them, that, that doesn't work at all, people just end up in the same place and it's very expensive for your community. But there has been some decisions made or maybe some decisions not made that have resulted in those people being there. So the, it's not a short answer, I think it would have to be a community wide strategy of, you know, it's like if you have an encampment, if you have encampments in certain places, it's not just one group of people that's going to be able to disengage or resolve that encampment we say. So it's like, we can move people along, but they're going to end up somewhere else or they're going to right, come right back. So unless we give some permanent resolution, which often involves a few city departments, right? So it's usually your, it might be your police department, but it's often like, maybe it's your, you know, public works department or your health department or there, it's a health crisis, right, to have people out there, it's really a public health crisis. And so it's, it's like sort of what services do they need, where can we actually ask them to go and what are we going to do to permanently resolve things so they don't have to come back there? And also which partners are sending people there too, right? There are, you know, we're telling people it's okay to be there and maybe we need to say, maybe we decide it's still okay, but we have to figure out sort of what we all think together about where, what we're telling people and where they can go. And so, and we don't want to keep just moving them from corner to corner to corner.
Thank you. Would you comment real fast on, on the no camping, no sit, no lie ordinances?
Sure, yeah, it's, so I don't know if, you're probably familiar with the constitutional, the, the case, the Boise case from the Ninth Circuit that basically makes it unconstitutional to sort of criminalize homelessness, people who are experiencing homelessness because they have a, they have no place to go essentially, their status, they're criminalizing them because of their status. So what we do know, aside from that, what we do know is that those, the communities that employ those strategies, it is not a deterrent, it doesn't, it doesn't decrease the people experiencing homelessness, it often, it doesn't even clear the area, it might clear one block, but people move to the next block. And what we see often is that it's just really costly, it's costly for people, for the police department to arrest these people over and over and over, they can't pay the fees, they stay in jail, they come right back out. And it doesn't deter people from being out there. And so we just have it, they're just ineffective, they're ineffective, they're inhumane, they're, and people have nowhere to go. So if you have nowhere to go and you're asking people to not sit, camp or lie, that's where the, the Ninth Circuit case comes down.
Thank you. Anne, you want to close, Paige and then, and then, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've got two quick questions. I know we had already touched on it a little bit, but I wanted to hear more about geographic dispersion. I know there's discussions of having all of your services available in one location, but trying to make sure that's accessible to people who may not be at that location. Have you found any good ways of kind of navigating where to put those, how to make sure you're reaching people, whether they're close to bus stops, doctors, grocery stores and things of that nature?
Sure, it's, I mean, it's community dependent, but I, one thing we would say is not a good idea is the campus model. Having everything on one campus, having every, like sort of a one-stop shop in a community where everybody has to come to that one place or putting tons and tons of services in one shelter for example, or, you know, we just haven't seen a campus work anywhere. Just the outcomes, they look good, they seem like they work, but when we look at the outcomes, we never really see anything that shows that it works well. If anything, it's really difficult and expensive to run and it's difficult for people experiencing homelessness to get to oftentimes. And then you're also kind of putting everyone in one part of the community and that community's not very happy about it or it's in a place where they can't really access anything else in the community. So I think, I mean, it's like anything else, I think when you're experiencing, if you put yourself sort of in the client's shoes, what, what do they need to get to and what do they need to, they need access to transportation, if they, they don't want to have to have to go all the way across town for social services necessarily, but is there, you know, are there enough things that are within a reasonable distance that can sort of make them successful in doing the things they need to do? You can't, so that's why the scattered site model is just a little bit better, it's integrated into areas that you have access to food, not just feeding programs, access to transportation so people can get to whatever job that they need to get to. So I think it's like, that's why the smaller, the smaller shelter model, and also then you don't have people, tons of people crowded into one community, one area, like you're kind of getting in downtown, if you have a lot of, a lot of things. It is easier for people to go across the street to get a meal, come back to shelter, but you don't want people there for long periods of time anyway, right? And so I think that if you can, adding more and more to one area, I think just makes that neighborhood more and more untenable for, for the public, for, you know, for people, then they're, all of their services are now there, so they sort of never even get to leave. So once they even get housed, they're going to come back to that neighborhood for services, which is often actually kind of counterproductive if people are trying to kind of exit, exit homelessness, they want to sort of transition into other parts of the community.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, looking at where, around, around the city or around the jurisdiction, where some community resource rich areas, I mean, as best you can, like you wouldn't want to build a shelter in a, in a, in a part of the city where, you know, there are no, there, there are not going to be no services or, or the ability to build any natural supports for those folks that they're, that they won't stabilize. Like I think that looking past, like getting them from shelter and then into housing is, like what, can this community be a place where clients would choose to live because they're going to stabilize there? And if you're thinking about a lot of single individual or individual adults, not necessarily families, that, that picture might look really different, like so schools might not be the thing because they don't have kids or, so what are those things in the community that, I mean, just common sense, like are going to help people, like I want to stay here versus, you know, having, having to come back? And whether that's because there are jobs there or, but maybe these are going to be folks who have, are on disability and won't be working, like what other kind of natural, what kind of natural supports can they build there or other community supports that can, they can engage, faith based, whatever that gamut of services would be.
That's great. And then have you seen methods of outreach once some of these places are available or these services are available to try to reach those populations to make sure they know that something new is available to them?
Oh, you mean, well, I think what we've seen is, so shelters that have transitioned to this, this, this model that we're talking about here, some of that stabilization works continues after, like it's almost like rapid rehousing, which case management is home based there. So since all the services are going to be housing focused and we're not going to have these programmer requirements, we have to do all these things in order to get into housing, you can shift some of that case management to, that you might normally do in the shelter while, while they're at home. So maybe there's a little bit of stabilization services after or for, we've seen like with individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness, especially of street outreach. And I was just going to say, like as you also build shelters, like looking at the same time, like what does your street outreach look like and is it housing focused? Because most street outreach in the country is not really predominantly housing focused. So that continuum of care that can happen through a street outreach provider who finally can get someone into shelter where that street outreach staff is partnering very closely with the housing specialist or case manager in shelter to, to help that housing plan because this person now has a relationship that may have taken years for them to develop with a street outreach person. And then we've seen where street outreach is actually the one who does some stabilization services and kind of is checking in with that person after they're in housing. But it kind of like we're talking about breaking down the silos where you would have like these staff of these different providers working together around one case, around one person to provide that.
That's great, thank you.
Leslie, did you say that? Anne?
Just two quick questions. One, the, could you speak to the role of recuperative care in the system? And by recuperative care, some people call it respite care, but what I'm talking about is where instead of discharging someone from a hospital onto the streets, you discharge them to a program where they can recover from their wound or, you know, whatever, whatever the physical illness is.
I, I mean, it's, it's a really important part of helping, certainly helping shelters be equipped with not having to take those folks. I mean, this is, happens everywhere, people essentially get dumped into shelters and shelters have no way of taking care of them because they're medically fragile. And having, and most communities have a very, certainly have a shortage of respite beds or recuperative care beds, having more of those online for, for people is, I would say, very important. Your people, the folks who are unsheltered, we're, we're looking at this just nationally, unsheltered people have a lot of medical issues from being unsheltered for so long. And so once they eventually do get healthcare access, they're going to need more than a shelter bed afterwards, often, not everybody, but, but a certain percentage of the population are going to need that. And so yes, it's definitely on, it would be helpful for the system to bring more of those beds online.
And I would also add, we've seen communities where they have placed coordinated entry in the hospitals because the discharge planning was so poor that they basically put, built partnerships with the hospital systems and said, we will, we would like to have a staff person in the hospital so that when the discharge planning process starts in the hospital, the coordinated entry person is a part of that process. So some hospitals have been the ones to provide that staff person, others it's been the homeless response system, but that's one way communities have addressed just poor discharge planning. So, I mean, this is mostly for folks who, you know, have not been in the hospital more than 90 days, but having coordinated entry and those partnerships with hospitals is critical. It's, we find it's still... It's, we find it's still very difficult for communities to build those partnerships for some reason, but it's effective when, when they do.
Okay. I have one last question.
Go ahead and close this out. We'll move on.
I just want to, there was some, talk about the, I think you said this, but we were talking, oh, I forget what we were talking about, but anyway, we were talking about, there is a cost, of course, to serving people on the streets without a shelter. And what I've seen anyway is, is to some, I mean, that's important and necessary, but to some extent it's spinning, spinning the wheels. And in some, in some extent, it's more costly to leave people on the streets with no place to be.
Absolutely.
So is there anything that you would say about that?
Yeah, I mean, you can have, you do have some very effective outreach here. It does, you don't have enough of it, but the one, what you do have is good from what we've learned. But yeah, if you don't have anything to outreach to, for the outreach workers, if you've, if you're an outreach worker, we hear this from outreach workers all over, but also we've heard this from your host team, if we don't have anything to give people, you feel like, well, how many times can I give someone, you know, socks or water or meal or whatever? I really want, that's not, they need more than that. And so I think that, to your point, if, giving them something that's more substantial to take people to or to attach, and that certainly could be shelter that people actually want to go to and, or that is more accommodating to their needs and then, yeah, and saying like, also, I think for people experiencing homelessness, they want to know that something's going to happen in that shelter for them, that's going to be different.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time.
And thank you for your help in city on the ongoing, the work you're otherwise doing too.
I just want to thank you all again. I know it was an effort to get here this early. And so, coming from the West Coast, and so I really, really appreciate y'all's time.